Good evening. As Chairman of Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order November 15th, 2022, regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us to celebrate achievement, review information, make policy decisions related to the effective operation of Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. At the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policies for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. There are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public; therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements of effective public meeting. Please silence your cell phones and communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, and may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken this time this evening to join us. We are very proud of the school system, and thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 15 de noviembre 2022. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y la superintendente se complacen que sean unidos a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y les damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Si alguien aquí necesita interpretación al español, por favor levante la mano y la intérprete le ayudará en este momento.
We will begin this evening's meeting with the contest winners of the Arts for Attendance video competition. Before I turn it to the superintendent, I do want to make a quick comment and say, "I am pleased to see all the young people here today," or rather, "tonight," and more importantly, the parents and the adults that have supported them throughout this contest. I love recognizing our youth and very much look forward to the video and celebrating the winners. So, thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. In September, the Hartford Public Schools District ACE team, our attendance, culture, and climate and engagement team, invited all students in grades pre-K through 12 to participate in our second annual Arts for Attendance visual, video, and slogan challenge. The challenge allows students and staff to demonstrate their creative talents while focusing on the very important task that we all have, which is attendance in connection with academics. Schools voted on their winning poster, video, and slogan during the first week of October, and now almost 2,200 families, students, community partners, community members, and our entire district voted on the grand prize-winning student-created poster, video, and slogan. So, congratulations to all winners. Slogan winners, in order of third to first place. Third place goes to Naylor School, and I believe accepting on behalf of Naylor is Albert Luciano. Let's see, Principal Alicia Eton. So, take a look at the slogan, right? "School is a place where anything is possible. You just have to be there to reach it." Second place goes to Burr Middle School. Sharri Lewis, are you here?
Yeah. Yeah.
And the slogan is "Two, four, six, eight. Come to school, don't be late. The more you know, the farther you will go."
I like that. I like that.
And in first place, Betance's Learning Lab. Megan Scully is here. And some friends. And they said, "Go to school to learn what your talents are hidden inside of you. School is cool." Hello, friends. Do we wait for the others to take pictures as a group? Okay. Visual winners in order from the third to first place. In third place, Kinsella Magnet School of the Performing Arts. And here, I believe, is Angeline Mendoza Garcia. Second place goes to Betansa STEM Magnet School, accepting on behalf of BSTEM is Principal Brooks. I also see Principal O'Brien coming down. And first place, Breakthrough North Magnet School. Camden Verderam is here. With Principal Verderam, all day, every day, I see. Now the video winners. Third place, Caneli School. I think Becca Scalis is here, yes, and Leonori Rodriguez. Ms. Rodriguez, the family and community support provider who helped create the video. In second place, Breakthrough North Magnet School, accepting the award. Also here for double take is Principal, no, Masaro is here. Didn't I just see Principal Masari? Masaro? Where's Lisa? Oh, there's Lisa, okay. And first place, and we're going to get ready for the video, Betansa STEM Magnet School. And I think Principal Brooks is already on the stage. And we have some more of our students here. Is there a video that we can tee up? Picture first? Okay, picture first. Let's see how we can do it.
We've got to squeeze in here and try to take a good picture, yeah.
Try to squeeze in as much as possible.
Yeah, get on the floor.
I'm going to take a couple of photos from here, and then I'm going to run to that side to get both angles. And I have a couple of phones here, so bear with me.
Where are we looking? To you?
Right here.
Okay.
Christina, you know I want that wide angle. That wide angle.
Man, don't you guys have Michael Air Dropper?
Which one?
Christina, we're going to you.
Christina, you.
Sure. Jesse.
Christina, no. Center guys, right over there.
Snap it away, and follow it.
All right.
I was like 2:25 on your back.
That one's yours, right?
I heard. No, I heard. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Superintendent, when they settle in, we'll play the video.
Okay, yes. With the video. Christina, go tee it up. It's like two minutes. It should be two, two, three minutes. She should be playing it.
You want to play the video? All right.
I got a new life. You hardly recognize me. I'm so bad off your person like me. Check my hair. What do I bother? Well, you're not the one for me. Isn't nothing nice sometimes? It opens up my eyes sometimes. Love is still melody without understanding. Eyes sometimes. It opens up my eyes sometimes. No one's going to drag you out to get into the night where you belong. But maybe you're not. It's love.
That was awesome. Again, congratulations to all the winners. Super impressive. Thank you, thank you, thank you. With that being said, we will now move on to public comment. Ms. Ledger?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. We, as a board, in collaboration with the Superintendent and district leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously, and to that end, staff will follow up within 48 hours. If follow-up is required via preferred method of contact, the speaker has indicated on the sign-in sheet. We will follow this no-contact method of follow-up for the time being, adhering to safety protocols. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please, 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 wrap up your comments. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos que se hayan tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford, y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las 48 horas si es necesario a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador haya indicado en la hoja de registro. Seguiremos este método de seguimiento sin contacto por el momento argiliendo-nos, perdón, a los protocolos de seguridad. Esa persona investigará su caso y comunicar con usted dentro de 48 horas. Les recordamos que tiene tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, el timbre sonará dejándolo saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios. Michael Downs?
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent. My name is Michael Downs, 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. And I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I would just like to start by saying I'm happy to see that we're receiving more funds for adult education. I mean, it's important for those adults, especially young adults, who have not achieved a high school diploma, to achieve that goal. And also, at the same time, we still have to try and get more funding for things, such things as in the areas of vocational technical education, library, art, music, and extracurricular activities system-wide, such as literature, writing, drama, science, and athletics. So, it's important that we have to continue to get funding. There's funding out there. There's federal funds as well as state funds, and we should take advantage of it now while the iron's hot. Thank you. Thank you.
John Walton, who as last speaker, will exercise his right to speak twice.
Greetings, superintendent and board members. It's always a challenge to try to follow Mr. Downs because he's absolutely correct about vocational skills. I mean vocational education, we need that. I would like to thank the principal of Weaver High School and the buildings operation manager of Weaver High School and Blue Hill Civic for their potential partnership in our youth work program. I think this is a great benefit to the Board of Education and a great benefit to our community. But I'm here to discuss some other things. And I want to leave you with this question because I want to have a conversation again. And the questions are that don't need to be answered now, but I want everybody to look in the mirror, and it's for the entire body. What do you see the union as? And do you see the union as a partner? Or do you see the union as a subordinate unit? That will identify and explain whether your intentions and treatment of the unions is negative or positive, in my opinion. I just have to say to you, and you know, I don't want to cast a shadow over the kids because they're number one, and this thing was great about the kids winning the awards. But now we have to talk about some of the real issues as well. And the assault on my presidency as a union president has been relentless. I've been called every name in the book. Crazy, a troublemaker, radical. But I just want to remind this body, out of respect, to everyone here, that if it wasn't for people like us, ancestors, who decided to speak power to truth, I mean, truth to power, and speak to broken systems, and step out with bravery to describe the dysfunctions of our broken systems, then none of us in this room will be in a leadership position. None of us. Our ancestors paved the way for us to be here not, and I'm saying this out of respect, not to just have nice houses, nice titles, nice cars, great careers. But they did that so that we could give back to our community. They did it so that we could do the work for the generations that come behind us. And I wear a shirt with Martin Luther King on it, who was a great civil rights leader. And in the corner of the shirt, it says, "I'm about making my ancestors proud." And what that means to me, whether you're from the Caribbean, whether you're from Europe, whether you're from the motherland of Africa, is our ancestors gave their lives. They gave their blood, sweat, blood, sweat, and tears, and even sacrificed their families so that we could be in positions, all of us, look at this board, look at this body, of all different diverse backgrounds, so that we could be in position to do for others. Not to be comfortable with broken systems and assimilate to those broken systems. We have been tasked with the duty of changing, something that I brought up called reform. Reform is necessary because we realize that these systems that were put in place before, 50 years ago, wouldn't have any of us in this room in a leadership position. Think about it, whether it be gender, race, or economical class. We are all here because our ancestors were brave enough to step out of their comfort zone and speak to the needs of the time. We owe it to our ancestors to do the same, in my opinion. The reason I'm speaking to the body like this is because, look at this vast group. Look at it. Everyone here has a duty to our children, to our family, to our ancestors, to make them proud. And our ancestors are wondering, what are we gonna do with the fortune that we've been given? Too much is given, much is required. It can't just be that we say our systems are broken and then we assimilate to broken systems. There has never been reform of a system in American history or global history that has changed on its own. Harriet Tubman, when I said to this body, "You are harbingers of hope," I meant that. Because what that meant was, and Harriet Tubman's message was, she didn't use the system to change anything. She created an Underground Railroad with people of similar minds to free and liberate those who were oppressed. That's what we should be about doing. Our system sometime is broken. We should acknowledge that and have the courage to try to reform it, not assimilate to it, because that, in my opinion, is not making our ancestors proud. Superintendent, I would definitely like an audience and your attention to the idea of adding a study program to the work program, which I believe you received an email about, so that we can align a study program with the work program and the vocational trades. I'm begging this body, I'm not appealing to your intellect. I'm not appealing to your academic acumen. I'm appealing to your consciousness. Because at the end of the day, all of us have to go and look in the mirror and express what our life meant. And if it's not about making our ancestors proud and building a bridge for our generations to come, then what is it really about? A wise person once said, and our ancestors said this, "People who are willing to change build bridges. Those who want things the same build barriers." Thank you for your attention, and thank you for what you do.
And that concludes public comment.
We now move on to the report of the chair. For this meeting, I actually have a couple of updates that I'd like to share with the audience. First is the Hartford Foundation update. At September 20th regular board meeting, the board voted for on a resolution directing the superintendent to explore and research establishing of a Hartford Public Schools foundation. The board received the overview of the necessary steps to establish a foundation and the potential financial implications at the October 20th board retreat. Based on the research and the information presented, the potential financial revenue does not warrant a substantial investment in time and energy necessary to achieve the success, to achieve success. While the board, while a board vote, excuse me, apologies. While a board vote is not necessary to establish such a foundation, at this time, the board is not unanimous in its support of such an effort. I would also like to share a few events that members of the board have attended since we last met. Board member Francois Ledger attended the Polaris Awards, which was hosted by Leadership Greater Hartford as a representative of the Hartford Board of Education. It was an evening filled with rich conversations about education entrepreneurship. She stated it was an honor to converse with innovative and intriguing members of the Greater Hartford community. Board Secretary Jahira Escobano attended the Community Schools Fundamental Conference held in New York City, October 25th to 27th. She accompanied Chief Black Burke and Michelle Sinko-Winsk from the Office of Family and Community Partnership. They had the opportunity to visit the community schools and talk with administration, staff, and students and learn of the gaps and strengths of their model and made a national connection with those that are pushing to strengthen community schools. Personally, as the chair, I have made the conscious effort to attend as many NRZ meetings as my schedule allows. In addition, I had the privilege of meeting with the AFT Leadership Program this past Saturday to discuss current state of our school system and opportunity teacher leaders can research to better assist Hartford Public Schools. On Veterans Day, I also had the pleasure to attend the Six Annual Hootway Veterans Day Showcase, where over 150 of the state's top basketball players, representing over 30 schools from Connecticut and beyond, gathered at Weaver High School to compete. And lastly, on Friday, October 7th, students from Buckley High, from Buckley High School and Pathways to Technology attended MIT's Bearing Witness Seeking Justice Conference in Cambridge, Massachusetts. Throughout the day, students saw several speakers from the US and from other countries like Africa, India. Various conference presenters spoke about how technology, like cell phones, are being used for the purpose of social justice. Later, students were given a tour of MIT's Media Lab, where several academic disciplines converged to research and develop new technologies based on ideas, such as electric AI bikes that can locate and find their riders. Students were also treated to a workshop, discussion, and panel for high school students. Students discussed and unpacked aspects of STEM, viral videos, and their intersectionality of tie-dye curriculum that examines history and the present tech and innovation and our roles in it, as well as the entertainment industry and cellphone geography and its impact on justice in the US and throughout the world. As always, I would continue to remind every board meeting, you can find the full committee reports as well as attachments and videos in the meeting's agendas on Board Docs. As a reminder, all committee and workshop meetings are live streamed as well as viewable after the meeting. The YouTube links are saved to each meeting agenda on Board Docs. I encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. If you have any questions, please contact Christina Santiago, our board liaison, at csantiagohartfordschools.org. We now move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to extend on your list there of board members, we did have Ms. Escobano join us at the literacy event on November 5th. The Office of Academics did host the series of us. It was a literacy event. So thank you for reading, having a reading circle. I do have a few updates, and then I have Ms. Santiago, if you can tee up a quick presentation. But I do want to highlight a few things here. One is that we did have our community budget forum chief, Penn and myself did host our school governance council members, families, community partners to discuss the budgeting process for the 2324 fiscal year. We shared how the school's equity-centered budget is developed, the how, what actually informs the decision-making and how the budget is implemented. SGC members had an opportunity to ask questions and discuss how they are an integral part of the budget development process, knowing that providing equitable access to important information is one of our priorities. So I do appreciate everyone that joined us, and we are going to continue through the budget process. Highlighting here, the educator preparation program. The Office of Talent Management is going to be hosting the educator preparation program information session for current non-certified staff with conferred degrees who are interested in becoming teachers in the district. So the session is gonna take place on the 16th, so that is tomorrow, from 4:30 to 6:30 here at Weaver. And registered attendees will have several 20-minute meetings with our university and alternate route for educator preparation partners. And so just want to remind our community that that is yet another opportunity to be part of our talent development pipeline. And in collaboration with Madres Guerreras, the Office of Family and Community Partnerships has been engaged in ongoing conversations with Madres Guerreras. Several of us met with our Madres Guerreras to continue talking about the concerns and to address, find solutions to access to school-level information given the gaps that exist in translation and interpretation services. So one of, as a result of the collaboration, we did launch the Zoom interpreters that are available across five schools for the parent-teacher conferences that are taking place today and tomorrow. We appreciate the advocacy of Madres Guerreras, and we will continue to work with them, given that we've asked them to help inform a way so we can better ensure access. And Ms. Santiago, if you can help me with just a few slides, just want to share with our community on our attendance, culture, climate, and engagement. Just to share some data points as to how we are tracking with chronic absenteeism. And we are at a much lower rate than we were at this time last year. And so we ended the year at a 46% chronic absenteeism rate last year. Currently, we are at 28%. And if we go to the next slide, just to kind of give a view across all of our grades, and there are, we're trending in the right direction. So chronic absenteeism is going down as compared to last year across all of our grades. Still acknowledging that there is room for additional improvement, but I did want to highlight the great work that everyone is doing, including our students, families, and staff, and obviously our community partners. If you go to the next slide, Ms. Santiago. I'm encouraging the community to take a moment to review the recording and also the presentation from the last board workshop that really took a closer look at student engagement and attendance. So I just want to share a few high-level updates there. We are working with Hanover Research Group, given that we want to really better able, be better informed about the experience of our high schoolers. And so there is going to be a series of focus groups for our high schoolers to understand their level of engagement and what it is that they would like to experience differently. We are also looking at revising a disengagement protocol that was shared with us by a neighboring district so that we can align that to student root causes as a result of their school avoidance. The mentoring across all grades and all schools with clear protocols, and of course, our community partner support. And then we're making sure that our data dashboards roll out using our Decision Ed platform, this time to be able to view the reason for the absences and the outcomes by school and as a district. So we have already done good work to make sure that the dashboards are available to the community, but we want it to be responsive to the needs that our school-based ACE teams are having with regard to the root causes and being able to visualize those data. Next slide, please. Just highlighting some of the bright spots in our work and the outstanding work that each and every one of our ACE teams is doing. Our staff, attendance, and culture engagement teams, they've been hard at work. And so across the state, Hartford Public Schools has had the second-largest reduction in chronic absenteeism rates from last school year to this year. So we're proud of that work that is happening across all of our schools and actually to also be leading in improvement efforts in the state. So the team, Chief Avila, Corinne Barney, Irene Ritz, and Mr. Heredia, thank you for your leadership and obviously for the leadership across all of our schools, knowing that these are interdisciplinary teams that come together to get at this complex situation here around student engagement. Last month, Sand School launched its first-ever walking school bus pilot program. The ACE team identified the students struggling with attendance and developed some routes based on the 31 chronically absent students that were on Tier 3 to pick them up and walk them to school. So this program has been developed in collaboration, again, with our partners at the Village for Families and Children, who are participating in the walking school bus as another way to support students and families. Another highlight, schools that are finding creative ways to reach their attendance goals, as many of you know. Our schools have been offering attendance incentives for students. In October, principals that both MD Fox and Wish Museum School offer students a chance to wrap them up like mummies. So you see here at Wish, the incentive was given to the class with the highest average daily attendance for October. I know it sounds really silly, but let me tell you, students and staff really get excited about all of this. And then you see on the left, a photo of Mr. Blake's class at MD Fox after they wrapped up Principal Geisler in toilet paper. That's a lot of toilet paper because Mr. Geisler is really tall. So I just wanted to thank our school leaders as well. And lastly, as you saw earlier tonight, our September Attendance Challenge. So a few photos of our Naylor Knights pep rally to launch our November district-wide Attendance Challenge. The Hartford Cup, right, they've kicked off the competition with a staff versus student soccer game and different soccer-based games. A reminder to all of us and to our community that right, the upcoming holidays, we know that when we look, the next slide, Ms. Santiago, when we look at the trends, attendance trends, we know that attendance dips, not only because of weather changes, but also the holidays. Cold, flu, COVID cases, families traveling out of the state before and after the break, and then of course, the weather. And so just encouraging everyone to reach out if you need support, and please, let's stay in school and show up every single day. And community, the dashboards are up and running in case you want to also get a glance of our progress. Chairman, that completes my report.
Thank you, superintendent. We now move on to the business agenda. Item 4.1, contract continuation approval, add on the night. Item 4.1, Contract Continuation Approval, Adam and Knight. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Adam and Knight for the term defined in the contract ending June 30th of 2023 at the cost not to exceed $199,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Superintendent?
Just a quick overview, and I believe, yes, Representative from Adams and Knight are here, along with Chief Curtis. So right now, we are positioned to leverage our pandemic relief funding to have availability in terms of attracting highly qualified candidates across all certified and uncertified roles. The campaign directly aligns to our fourth strategic priority, which is skillful staff and effective operations, because we really want to increase the OTM's capacity, our Office of Talent Management, their capacity to recruit new talent to the district. And we're also leveraging the opportunity to continue to build our brand recognition. This phase of the work will highlight why representation matters while using channel marketing to dramatically increase the diversity of our talent pool. We know that there is untapped talent right here in our greater Hartford community, and we aim to reach new and different candidates within the region, the state, and even across the country. So this phase of the campaign will specifically leverage and channel that marketing, channel marketing, and specifically target our HBCUs, our Black churches, Connecticut African-American newspapers, radio, and digital sources to target these very specific demographics. I'll pause there.
Before I open it up to questions, Ms. Curtis or Reem, do you have anything that you want to share with the board and the audience?
No, I think that sums it up. The superintendent did a great job. I just want to mention that we've branded the district, but we need to move into Phase 2. And the majority of the money that we'll spend with Adams and Knight, only a portion of it will be for creative. The majority of it will be for us to actually be in the market. So when hiring season rolls around, which is going to be really quickly in the next few weeks, we want to be out in front of the competition and that they recognize our brand and are ready to click on that advertisement and apply for a job in our system.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from my colleague, Board Member Johnson?
Yes, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much, Dr. Curtis, for this. I am a person who frequents social media quite frequently, and I saw the campaign almost every day on my timeline, and it was just really, really good to see, shared it, and will continue to share it. And I want to say I absolutely appreciate the target group. I think that might be different from the first segment that you went after. As you know, HBCUs and Black churches and African-American newspapers, that is completely down my alley, and I'm happy that we're looking to now support them with our information, because our people do read those papers and get their opinions and so forth and so on. My question is, with 233 certified vacancies, 173 non-certified vacancies, are we positioning ourselves with this market to fill it? Is there... I'm not asking you for a certain number, but do you think with this effort in this campaign, with the target demographic that you're looking at, are we really going to put a dent in 233 certified vacancies, knowing that teachers of color are coming from different areas? Or are we looking at new perspective of teachers getting certified and then pulling them in? It's a broad question, but answer it the best you can.
Thank you so much. So, yes, we do have a plethora of openings right now for certified and non-certified. It's important to note that the recruiting arm of OTM, it's still working every single day. Just last week, we had a session for non-certified, specifically cafeteria workers. 98 folks applied for the session, to attend the session, of the folks who ended up coming. We had 22 applications for open positions. So we are actively recruiting and attempting to fill vacancies right now. But specifically in our outreach to people of color, we have a couple of ways in which we're trying to bring folks into our system. So we have something right now, what we call the Caribbean Connection. So we're moving into Jamaica and the U.S. Virgin Islands, the DR. But we're also, we're seeking to say, there could be folks right now that are in Hartford that could quite possibly fit that demographic and be licensed, not just working for Hartford. So we're going after those folks, right? But then we're also going after people that we may need to connect with and get J-1 visas for. So there could be some folks in Jamaica that want to come over, but they need a J-1 visa. So we're actively seeking those partnerships as well. But then we're going after folks in states where we have reciprocity, so we can get them over here quickly. And then we're setting up, right now, we have, I believe we have 77 student teachers right now. So we're offering contracts to our December grads, so our student teachers who are graduating next month. We're saying, "Join Hartford right now." And if you're not ready to join right now, can we offer you a contract and you join us in August for the 2324 school year? So we have a variety of methods that we're seeking to fill vacancies for next year, but also for right now.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much. And my final question is, how long is this campaign going to run? Because I remember the campaign running for some significant time, and then it just dropping off the face of Facebook, right? So what is your timeframe? When will it begin and when will it end?
So this contract would be for six months, but that six months includes creative. And I'm going to defer to Reem, because I'm not sure how long we will have paid advertisements. So I'll ask her to step in.
Again, we're going to try to maximize the dollars in the budget. So within that six-month timeframe, as soon as we can get back on, because we were trying to, we didn't want it to fall off the face of the earth, and we tried to keep it on there. So we're looking at between that four to six months, you know, depending on how much we can stretch the dollars.
Board Member Escobano?
Thank you, Chair. Can you guys hear me? Great. Good evening. How are you guys? Good, thank you. This is really exciting, and I'm impressed with how innovative and we are trying to be to get ahead of what the entire nation is facing, which is a teacher shortage, right? And how we're trying to individualize this based on our community, right? That we know in Hartford, Jamaican, Puerto Rican, Dominican, all of that. So I'm really happy how the approach that you guys are taking. My only comment, and just putting it out there, this is not whether I'm going to vote for this or not, that's nothing to do with it. It's more so, once we get those applicants, right, making sure that on that other end, that your team at OTM is ready to move fast on those applications, right? So the last thing we want is for us to get five applicants, right? And then they wait two weeks before they hear back. So that's really my only comment. I don't know if you guys have been able to fix that. I know there's been complaints about the lag or any of that. That is really my biggest concern, because I've been seeing the campaign on Instagram, Facebook too, which is great. It's creating a filter bubble now. All I see is HHS, which is great. But again, my biggest concern is, right, once you get those applications, how quickly we can turn around and be like, "All right, you're accepted," or "Not accepted."
In OTM, I can say that since I've been there, we've operationalized a lot of our workflow. We only have one vacancy right now in OTM, so there have been periods where we have been fully staffed and where we have brought on temporary workers to help us with some of the backlog. So I would say processing new hires or new applicants is not a concern for me right now. And if someone does have a challenge or issue, they could contact me, and I can have it taken care of.
Board Member Walker?
Yeah, let's follow up, Chief Curtis. How are you... I'm following her question. How are you engaging kind of real-time contact and communication with these applicants? You're processing, you're processing. I totally get it. What I saw is successful from a corporate standpoint is communication in real-time that keeps a person thinking that someone is reaching out and talking to them, and they have very much visibility. So do you have apparatus in place where candidates, once they say they're interested, they're in your clutches, and they're hearing from you all the time? What process do you have to make that happen?
So we call that keeping a candidate warm. So that's part of what our recruitment team does. But just as recently as today, for the district, we brought back in-person onboarding. So we have moved that into a digital space because of COVID. So we could no longer do in-person onboarding. And just today, we did in-person onboarding, where we were able to make that physical connection with folks who were onboarding and who were processing for hire, be able to answer all of their questions upfront, make sure that everything that they need to get done in the hiring process is checked off, so there are no bumps in the road between when they get onboarded and when they can actually start in their role. We started that with a small group of non-certified folks today, custodians. And we want to codify those processes so that when we get into our larger hiring groups, say, teachers, that we can move swiftly and make sure that people feel connected right in the beginning of the hiring process.
Okay, thank you. I have a second question.
Let's make sure it's pertaining to the Adam and Knight contract. Is it pertaining to Adam and Knight contract?
It's pertaining to hiring substitute teachers.
So I think that's a great question, but I would like to stick to the agenda item.
OTM is here now. What I'm hearing on the ground is that schools and teachers... I'm saying, "on the ground right now, she's hiring for next year." What we're hearing right now is that people need substitute teachers. So I'm just wondering if OTM is...
Correct, but since this is a public meeting and the agenda item is the Adam and Knight...
At what point am I going to bring it up this evening? I defer to you.
Correct. I think that's appropriate for another conversation, another meeting.
Can it be this evening?
You can make a motion to add it to the agenda. But before we do that, are there... Ms. Brody, I believe you had a question regarding this agenda item?
And I think what would be, thank you, Mr. Chairman, what would be helpful is, in the past, when the superintendent gave her report, we were able, is a lot of things that she discussed that when we, it was a discussion period, and some of the things that we want to ask and talk about that might not be on the agenda but covered in her report, when we have the opportunity at that point to speak, we could get some of the things said. So that would be helpful. Because tonight is Parent-Teacher Conference, and that night being on this date is a conflict for many, for teachers here being able to here to speak, for students to be coming here to speak, for us, because I have to figure out when I'm going to meet with my child's teacher, because tomorrow during the day or after school doesn't work. So if we could speak, you know, when the superintendent gives her report, that would be absolutely helpful. In regards to this agenda item, what I see it on Facebook, I see it and represent, I actually really like the advertisement. But for me, and I've mentioned this in committee, I'm struggling with not being able to connect the actual applicant as a result of the advertisement to make it make sense for me to vote for it. For this, I believe this is $199,000. So if we, what could we do to put in place to know that when the applicant applies, that it was because you seen this advertisement? Because it's nothing, we don't know if the people we're hiring actually was a result of seeing this advertisement. It's been said that we get more clicks and that sort of thing. But if we could make that direct connection, that would be so helpful. So we'll know we're spending this amount of money, and it's actually resulting in a hire. And that's how we know that our investment was a good investment. And I believe, maybe in committee, we mentioned that we're trying to get to that space to add, answer, or question, you know, click that box. But that's how we know we're spending our money, and it's being put to good, and it's working. So that was the only comment I had in regards to this agenda item.
Dr. Curtis or Mr. President?
Yes, so that did come up in the Teaching and Learning Committee. And then when we presented again in the Finance Committee, we actually came back with the information. We do have a question on the application, "How did you hear about us?" And we showed the data in the Finance Committee that our highest response rate on our applications were from Indeed, from them seeing the paid advertisement in Indeed. And that's how they found out about the job.
Follow-up, Mr. Chairman? Do we have, like, how many, like, is it monetized? Like quantify, like, do we know how many? Versus, "We hired this amount of applicants, and this percentage of those applicants were as a result of this advertisement." I'm not really asking you to answer that right now. Like, that's what I'm saying. Like, if we could get it to that, so we know in this period of time, and you break it out however you want, this period of time, six months, this amount of applicants, of that amount of applicants, this percentage was as a result of this advertisement. That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Brody. So it sounds like there was a follow-up action in terms of, what I'm hearing is like an ROI analysis of this contract.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Sorry. From what I heard, Ms. Brody's asking for some type of analysis, financial analysis of the impact of the dollars being spent.
Sorry about that. So I think what would be accessible is finding data that tracks the digital journey, so correlated data rather than causal. So I don't think we'll ever get to a point where we could say the ad caused a person to apply, or therefore caused their application to be seen. But we could track the digital journey as in click-through rates, and then doing the analysis that Dr. Curtis referenced in Indeed to try to figure out how many people that saw the ad ended up applying. We wouldn't be able to get to a causal point, though.
So it's not possible for us to get down to, "You applied because of the ad, and you actually..." That applicant was actually hired. There's no way we could make that.
So with certainty, I don't think there's any way to draw a conclusion that one specific piece of exposure caused a person to apply. But we can track the digital journey, so we could see how many times that they were interacting with an ad. You know, we know that there's multiple touchpoints, so the impressions, you know, account for frequency. So we'd be able to see how many times an applicant was potentially seeing an ad. But in terms of that, like, specific causal, I don't think so.
To build on what you're saying, so typically what we would do is be able to put a line of code, right, on the application site. So that third-party site wasn't allowing us to add that code where we could track. So we can track that we're driving them to the site, but what happens on the site, because they weren't allowing us to put that code to track their actions, that they actually applied, that's what he's saying, we couldn't make that final connection. So unless we change that third-party vendor, and I know you were having conversations about that, that was that barrier piece.
Last thing, Mr. Chairman, I promise, and we will move on, because I know we have some business to handle. But so is there a way, not on Adams and Knight, on Hartford Public Schools, when you interview someone or someone applies, you can ask, "How did you hear about us?" And if they say, "From advertisement." We know if we hired them or not. Not putting it on, it doesn't have to be Adams and Knight, but can we, so we know that the money we're spending results in a hire or not? Or, you know, just having good data?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Thank you.
Board Member Walker, I believe you had a resolution that you wanted to bring forth? Correction, a motion.
Right.
Yes, I'd like to...
Point of order. I don't think that we can entertain another motion while we have a motion on the floor.
That's true.
Thank you. Appreciate the, appreciate the clarification, Vice Chair Johnson. Are there any further questions or comments relating to this topic? Okay. Oh, Board Member Ledger?
Thank you so much. My question is about Montessori, as always. What are you doing to recruit Montessori teachers of color? And if they're not certified or trained, are you perhaps reaching out to the Montessori Training Center Northeast that's located right in our area to perhaps get training?
So right now, we are meeting with the Montessori principals and talking about the supports that we can sustain because the training that is required is expensive. And we, we don't want to start, we have COVID funding, right? But, and we don't want to put something in place that we can't sustain over time. So right now, we're looking at what is a practice that we can put in place that we would be able to sustain, that would help folks get trained and get licensed, but also help us recruit into that pipeline as well. And I'm not going to say it's necessarily target to, targeted to people of color. It's targeted to Montessori teachers just in general because that's a hard-to-fill position in and of itself. And then after we get something like solidified as like a pipeline into that Montessori position, then we can begin to try to diversify that actual pipeline.
Are there any additional questions or comments? The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to authorize, sorry, to authorize the execution of the contract with Adams and Knight for the term defined in the contract ending June 30th of 2023 at the cost not to exceed $199,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays?
Nay.
Abstentions? The ayes have it. Before going to, actually no, we'll, we'll circle back with, uh, Business Agenda Item 4.2, First Reading Several Policies, 5144.1, 5144.2, 3524.1, and 1324. Board Member Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you for this opportunity just to give these, these updates in the first reading for our Policy Committee. And I just want to shout out our Policy Committee. I think we've had a record-breaking year of all kind of things that we have looked at. And so I just want to shout out the committee for getting up early on 8:30 in the morning and are ready to, to do the work of Hartford Public Schools. So item number one, first reading, Use of Physical Force, 5144.1. This policy adopted in 1999 with language revisions in 2005. Since this time, Connecticut law has evolved to address conditions pertaining to the use of physical restraint and/or seclusion. Required training and prevention training, use of exclusionary timeout in more detail in Policy 5144.2. The language in the policy has been revised to reflect current definitions and appropriateness of specific strategies to ensure student safety. This is our first reading. Item number two, first reading, Physical Restraint, Seclusion, and Use of Exclusionary Timeout, 5144.2. Policy adopted in 2011 with revisions in 2006 and 2019. Since this time, Connecticut law has evolved to address settings appropriate for the use of exclusionary timeout. The language in the policy has been revised to reflect current definitions and the appropriateness of specific strategies to ensure student safety. Item number three, first reading, Pesticide Applications, 3524.1. K-Policy Audit identified this as a mandate policy missing from our policy manual. While we have followed legal requirements with any and all use of pesticides, this policy formulates existing practices. Item number four, first reading Soliciting Funds from and by Students, 1324. As a K best practice, the district will benefit from a clear policy to guide soliciting funds by students. In summary, our Policy Committee continues the work of improving and modernizing our policy manual. And a big shout out to Dr., Dr. Silver. I meant to say Sylvia, but Dr. Silver, please forgive me, Dr. Silver. This concludes our first reading.
Are there any questions or discussions regarding the items that were discussed? As this is the first reading, no ver is required at the time. Before moving on to the consent agenda, Board Member Walker, I believe you have a motion that you'd like to bring forth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we are able to discuss is strategies of obtaining substitute teachers, what we're doing at this current moment. And I think I'd like that to be a topic that we can discuss this evening since OTM is here and part of the staff dealing with recruitment is also here.
Second.
So I just want to make sure the motion is to discuss strategies to retain substitute teachers.
Acquire, obtain, and retain substitute teachers.
Just want to clarify, the motion on the floor is for the Hartford Board of Ed to discuss strategies to re-
Obtain.
To recruit and retain-
Yep.
-substitute teachers.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions?
I'm saying...
The ayes have it.
Chair, I can set a little context.
Board Member Walker, go ahead.
Right. So the number of teachers we have shortage in the district, to me, represents around three or four teachers at each school potentially. It may not be broken down that way. What I have heard is in one school setting, classes are being canceled and teachers are being redirected into substitute roles because the persistence of certain classes just not having a permanent teacher and them not having adequate substitutes. And so because it was brought to me-
Mr. Walker, can you move the mic closer to you?
I'm sorry. So the context is that there, there are substitutes, there are vacancies at most of schools in the district. It was brought to me that at one school setting, you have regular, regular classes being canceled so teachers can be deployed to be substitutes for areas that need teachers. And so it was elevated to me that, hey, they don't like that particular situation. But what's, what can be done? I mean, that, you do have to have instruction in classrooms. And so it, what to me, the idea that we really need to accelerate acquiring substitutes or finding some way to get more instructional staff within buildings so that there's just fewer vacancies in a temporary time until we get permanent teachers. And so that's, that's the backdrop. And so I'm kind of giving it to your team to talk about what are we doing around acquiring substitutes and maybe how are we helping at the school level them deal with the constant shortage of instructional teachers they have?
So I will defer to my colleague, Chief Avila, regarding the context of the school buildings. However, for the sake of OTM, that discussion, I will say that we are actively, in our recruitment department, we are actively engaging around certified and non-certified positions. So every single job that we have a vacancy in, we are actively recruiting folks for those positions. So we hold job fairs, we hold informationals, we go to places and throw up our, our advertising and our marketing to attract people. And particularly for substitute teachers, we increased the rate that we pay substitute teachers. We provided a continuity bonus to, so when we have subs to incentivize them for working 30 days straight, meaning even though we have a sub, subs can choose to work two days here, three days here. We incentivize them working 30 days straight so their attendance can be increased in that way. So I would say, you know, we, we have a finger on the pulse of all vacancies in the schools and we are actively recruiting for all vacancies. Chief Avila, did you want to speak to schools?
So there are a variety of ways that we provide coverages when we don't have the resources. And so one example is Unified Arts might be canceled in order for the Unifies Our Teachers' support to go into the classroom and provide instruction. We also have teachers who, on a rotating basis, will work during their prep. That also provides. And there are times when if a student doesn't come in, that a parent educator is working with that individual student and the student is not in school, the parent also will be able to cover the class as well. Additionally, there are times when necessary that, that district staff also supports the school building if need be to help support with any vacancies for that particular day as well.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question, Chair. All right. So the question I've just asked, and this is maybe for OTM, is as people are talking to folks in other districts, they're hearing people are going to churches, they're asking former students, they're asking parents, because this is an issue across the area. So are we doing the same thing? I guess the question that I was asked, so I'm going to ask you, are we doing all of that? And maybe just one other question, is there any possibility that benefits can be offered to substitute teachers as a way to incentivize them to really come and stay longer or hang out in terms of that 30-day-plus thing you're talking about?
So in terms of the strategies that we use to recruit substitute teachers, I don't have all those with me because that would be my recruitment team. I think they're pretty proficient, so I leave that task to them. I do know, though, that every week, Chief Avila puts out a, a veto or a newsletter to all principals and a section of that newsletter is for OTM. And we put in there all of our upcoming fairs so school leaders can share it with folks in their school communities as well. In terms of what we can offer substitute teachers, I'm not in a place where I can speak to anything outside of a bargaining agreement. Like those are things that are, that are dealt with in negotiations. So it wouldn't be wise for me to speak about negotiations outside of negotiating. And the third thing was, oh, I wanted to mention that even like with our student teachers, that we have over 70 student teachers, we also give them opportunities to sub right away also. So we tap into that community and then we say to those student teachers, if you have friends who are placed in other districts, let them know that we would love for you to refer them to our district as well.
Okay. Thank you. Superintendent, you have a comment?
Yeah. And Chief Penn, you can keep me honest here. This is from a few years back, but I believe there's a restriction on using non-certified subs in Title I schools. I don't know if that's still the case, Chief Penn, but just a little, that's not specifically what you're asking about, but you know, given that we, the majority of our schools are Title I schools.
Board Member Brody?
How recent is that, Madam Superintendent?
I believe that's a little more.
But how far, like, so there cannot repeat that? I could not have heard that right.
Restriction on using non-certified subs in schools that are considered Title I schools.
But do we know how far that goes back? Like, is that as recent as the last seven, 10 years?
We can, we can go back and look.
Because I've subbed for four years and all the schools were Title I schools and I'm not certified. So...
We can look at that.
Okay.
So, hang on.
Board, Board Member Walker, do you have a-
Yes. Yeah, just some clarification then. So we're saying majority, like, two-thirds, three-quarters of our schools are Title I schools? So are we saying that's the reason that, that the speed at which we get substitutes are slower than other districts where they don't have that limitation?
No, I was not making a connection to that. I was just making the connection as to whether or not we would have to filter through that as another limitation. And, yeah.
Are there any other additional questions or comments?
Yes.
Board Member Walker?
Yeah. Just as maybe some type of action, is there some, maybe you do it already, Chief Curtis, do we track like, like burn down in terms of how many substitute teachers that we need, that we have, where they're critical? Is that data available? Can we see it or can it be shared?
Can you repeat, what type of data are you looking for in terms of substitute teachers?
Like data of, like substitute teacher hiring, how much need do we have, where is it more, where is it most critical? So that we can understand and we can see, so we can react or to share with people as they're coming to us, asking about what are we doing with substitute teachers and that kind of thing? Is that data available in terms of hiring and where they're being deployed and where there's need?
So yes, we know how many substitute teachers we have. There is a couple of different types of substitutes that we have. So we can have building subs, so that, that's a building, that's a substitute teacher that is like assigned to that building, shows up every day for that school. There's also a pool of substitutes. So that means if I'm a teacher, I know I'm going to be out tomorrow. I put it into frontline, my absence. And then we have a, a group of substitute teachers who go in and select where they want to go every single day. So it's, it's, that's the beauty of substitute teaching is that you can just, you can decide if you want to take a job or, you know, not. You know, you might say like, I never want to sub in a kinder class. I only want to do ninth graders or high school. You know what I mean? So, so we have a couple of different ways in which you could sub. But yes, we do have all that information in OTM.
So last question then, if, well, I wasn't asked. So if we identify people, is there a simple way we can direct them to some site? They click something and they can get into the pipeline quickly?
Well, we have an applicant tracking system or an applicant where you go apply for a job. And it's called Nimble. And absolutely, we can send that link. And then on our Nimble site is a job for substitute teaching.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Avila. So we have a careers tab on our Hartford Public Schools web, website. And you click on the careers tab and then it just shows you all of our open positions. And then you can apply right there. The link for Nimble is right there on the website.
Okay. Are there additional questions or comments? Given that this is the discussion, thank you, Chief Avila. Thank you, Dr. Curtis. Moving to agenda item number five, the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are 5.2, Acceptance of Funds to Adult Education- Items on the Cessent Agenda are 5.2, Acceptance of Funds to Adult Education and CEE Grants; 5.3, Approval of Budget Transfer; 5.4, Approval of Minutes from October 18th Board Meeting. Any comments or questions on the Cessent Agenda? Seeing no comments or questions, do I have a motion to take the Cessent Agenda up as one item?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Sorry, ayes, any nays, abstentions, the ayes have it. Now that the Cessent Agenda is one item, do I have a motion to vote on the Cessent Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, abstentions, the ayes have it. Item six, Executive Session, Discussion of Documents Related to the Collective Bargain Agreement. We'll be going into Executive Session to discuss documents related to collective bargain agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, abstentions, the ayes have it. Will be taken with us into Executive Session, Chief Curtis, Chief Penn, Attorney Melinda Kaufman, and Lori Muzick.
Thank you. Resuming back to business agenda, item number seven. Item seven point one, approval of collective bargain agreement with the buildings and ground supervisor local eight one eight of council number four AFL-CIO. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education approve the proposed collective bargaining agreement with the buildings and ground supervisor local eight one eight of council four point O. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Astentions? The ayes have it. I believe we have a motion for the next item.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Or member Escobano?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone and move business agenda number eight, item number eight, to December sixth board workshop and executive session.
We have a motion on the floor to move, sorry, to postpone and move business agenda item number eight to December sixth workshop and executive session. Do I have a motion?
I'm so moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Astentions? The ayes have it. Thank you. The November fifteenth Hartford Board of Education meeting is now adjourned. Enjoy the rest of your evening.